...and a few others, and I give the purpose of what today's meeting is all about, and to kind of give you an overview of how today will go, this evening will go. First of all, my name is Sarah Harden. I am the chairperson of Partners in Prevention, which is a coalition here in Bullock County. My other title is Safe and Dark Free School, Corningham for Bullock County Schools. So I serve two roles here, and two purposes here. I am a parent of two daughters, I am a teacher, I am an administrator in the county schools, and I'm also an advocate for dark free in Bullock County. At this time, I'd like to introduce our executive board members for Partners in Prevention. Randy Pace is our vice chair, he is in the back. Megan Hatter is our secretary for the Coalition too, and of course myself, I'm Partners in Prevention. We have many other members that are also a part of it. Brittany Watkins in the back, she is our representative for seven counties. And I wanted to say thank you all again for coming. This is obviously a very hot topic, very controversial issue, but I want to make sure that you understand the purpose of why we held this meeting. Partners in Prevention, our mission says that it's a coalition made up of caring and involved citizens, working to create a safe and healthy environment through comprehensive services, of reducing substance abuse among Bullock families and youth. So I wanted to make sure you understood the mission of our coalition, and why we held this meeting. Right, I would also like to invite you to our Partners in Prevention meetings that we hold every month here in Bullock County. They're on the second Tuesday of every month, it is held at the Bullock County Health Department, and it ends at 12 o'clock. Do you would like to jot that down? So tonight's meeting is an opportunity to share information on how the impact of marijuana legislation has on you, could have on the youth of our families in Bullock County. We are trying to make this as structured as possible for today. So we would like, the format we'll have today, our speakers will speak, our keynote speaker will speak, we will have a chance after that for our legislators that are here to also speak for a small amount of time. And then for those of you all that have submitted questions, there is a box in the back, so as he speaks, you are more than welcome to submit more questions, and place them in the back, and then we will have 20, 30 minutes at the end of the timeframe to answer those questions. I will read the questions, and then he will answer, or Mike will answer both of our speakers, Stephanie will lead. Our first speaker is Michael Lab, he works, he's worked for the local Metro Police Department in the Narcotics Unit for five years. He was an expert in narcotic witness for the Commonwealth, and he is now our current director for Bullock County Drug Task Force. Mike?
Just to introduce myself, all I have to say, I'm the director of the Drug Task Force for Bullock County. I've been here for all, I'm 415 committee a year. Task Force, we've added people to it, we've had a lot of investigative tools to it, a lot of equipment to it, and we're doing outstanding job. In the past year, we've got an awesome foundation right now. I told the sheriff, I said, "Give me six months a year, and we'll be all in the United States." We are conducting cases in South America now, Miami, Florida, out in California, Texas, St. Louis, there's all kinds of places we're doing actual investigations. People don't think some kind of small community like this, the drugs go that far, and we don't have true cartel violence, it's there, you just don't see the violence. They're capable of committing the violent act at any point, but I promise you, since I've taken on Task Force, this county would be so much better off as far as having a handle on who's here, which one of the cartel organizations operating in Bullock County. We've done outstanding job. What you see on the news is just a small tab of what we're doing. A lot of stuff we can put on the news to this active investigation. I promise you, over the next year, you'll see some major, major traffickers be taking off streets of Bullock County. So I will be here the entire time, I'll stay as long as you want after, if there's any questions, but I'll be here the entire time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our keynote speaker this evening is Ed Shumalia, I'm sorry if I butchered your name, I apologize. He is a 30-year veteran and a former commander of the Kentucky State Police, and he is now part of the National Marijuana Initiative, so, thank you.
Thank you, you're a, I'm honored to be here. I know I got, Randy told me I had 30 minutes to talk, and this is a mission, if you could talk for 30 days, and we probably still wouldn't get through everything we need to discuss. So what I'm gonna try to do today is accomplish a few things. Number one, you know, I want to educate folks as to what is going on in this country with respect to marijuana. And in order to do that, you have to understand a little bit about what we're talking about when we speak about today marijuana. I want to talk a little bit about the difference between marijuana today and the marijuana in existence 30 years ago. I also look at, if you want to look at what's going on in the country, and extrapolate that to what might go on, not only in Bullock County, but in this Commonwealth, should the Commonwealth choose to go down the path that 23 states and the district Columbia have gone to, I think we've got a great set of data to take a look at at what is going on presently in the 23 medical marijuana states. So I want to talk a little bit about that, and what we're seeing, and, but I want to frame this discussion around the science. If we could talk about the emotion, this is a hot button issue right here. I mean, this is an extremely hot button issue here. People have already made up their minds, they've already made up their minds. And, but I think that what needs to be done here, is there needs to be a discussion about the relevant science here. And I'm gonna touch a little bit on that, but I got 30 minutes, and we're not gonna get into a great deal on that either. So let's talk about the marijuana today, and let's talk a little bit about Kentucky. And Kentucky is a prolific marijuana-producing state. We are the second largest marijuana-producing state in the country, second only to California. The only reason we don't produce more marijuana in California, if we don't have the land masses that California had. If we did, we actually were situated longitudinally, latitudinally, in perfect condition for growing marijuana. Our cultivators are pretty good marijuana growers, I know that from personal experience, that produce some very good marijuana. Let's talk about what we're seeing today with marijuana, and we'll talk about potency. And that's what people don't understand, is today's marijuana is nothing like the marijuana of the 60s. And to give you an idea, the marijuana, when I was in high school in the late 60s and early 70s, the average, and, and listen, what's the only compound, there's 90 cannabinoids within marijuana, what's the only one you've ever heard of?
THC.
THC, that, you know why? That's what gets you high. That is the only compound within marijuana that gets you high. I'm gonna say something here that's probably gonna shock a lot of you, you know what? There are cannabinoids within marijuana that have medicinal value. That's a cop telling you that. But you know what? Marijuana smoked in its crude form has no medicinal value. We have a process in this country, that we determine the medical efficacy and safety of drugs, and that's the FDA process. We already have medicine marijuana, called Marinoff. We also have two other drugs that are in phase three trials in this country, that are direct derivatives of, Marinoff is a synthetic derivative of THC. We have two drugs, GW Pharmaceutical, that are made right from the plant itself, and that's Satovex and Epidiolex. Satovex is showing great promise in these trials, with muscular dystrophy patients and muscle spasticity. Epidiolex is showing great promise with pediatric seizure disorder. We have a process in this country where we determine the medical efficacy and safety of a compound, and that's the FDA. Whether you like it or not, and I'll tell you another thing, the FDA needs to get off their butt, and they need to expand research into the cannabinoids within marijuana, to determine which one of those have medical benefit. But, I will say this again, smoking marijuana has no medical benefit. There is no science to substantiate that smoked marijuana, nor is there any other medicine that is delivered by an igniting compound anything smoking in. It doesn't exist. Talk about potency, and why this is important to understand potency. 30 years ago, I said, the average marijuana cigarette joint had a THC level between a half a percent and two. If you've got something that had 2% THC, you've got some astronomical dope. Last year, the average THC content of outdoor dope in America via the DECEP, which is DEA total, was 12%. We are seeing indoor, indoor grow marijuana that's running anywhere, almost up to 50%. Then you want to talk about UTE extraction, or we're getting 70 and 80% of THC extraction. So what I'm telling you is the marijuana today has a potency level eight to 10 times greater than it was 20 years ago. We have seen potency levels from 2009 to 2014, jumped from average of 9% to 12% just in five years. What has happened though, is, and what is allowed at, and what I theorize, these potency levels are gonna increase even more because of the 23 medical marijuana states, and now we have two legalization states, and they're basically allowing embedded experimentation with breeding of marijuana. So we're seeing, if you can grow, you don't have to worry about prosecution, you can do a lot of stuff with your dope, and these cultivators are getting very good at breeding the CBDs out, and breeding the THC out. Because whenever, when God put this plant on this plant, for whatever reason, the CBD levels and THC molecular levels was about a 1:1 ratio. And what the CBDs do, is they counteract the psychotropic effects of Delta-9, that's a hydrocannabinol, or THC. And what we've done through selective breeding by our cultivators, is we bred the CBD levels out, conversely, bred the THC levels out, and where we have nothing in that naturally occurs in this plant to counteract the psychotropic effects of Delta-9. So we have an extremely potent range of marijuana. So you asked me, "Why should I be concerned about that?" Well, let's talk about what we're seeing with kids, and look at the science and what it says. The 23 medical marijuana states, let's talk about teen usage. Anybody want to guess, on average, how much higher teen, and I'm talking about 12, 17-year-olds, how much higher teen usage is in the medical marijuana states than it is in the non-medical marijuana states?
45.
Those four or six points higher, which your place took about that same in the percentage. Look, Rocky Mountain High Medical has done an extensive research in Colorado, and I think Colorado is a great barometer to take a look at what's going on in this country. Produced a report, they actually produced three. The most relevant occurred in '13, and the last one just came out, and I noticed part of it sitting up here, I don't know who copied it, part of it's sitting up here. I would encourage you to take a look at that document, and let me give you some quick statistical information on what they're seeing in Colorado. Colorado's a medical marijuana state, also went legal, as of January the 1st. Let me let me get my stats, so I make sure I don't disquote you down here, because I definitely wouldn't want to be accused of doing that. Let's see what we're talking about with respect to kids here, and the relevant stats here. All right. Distribution to minors, drug-related referrals to high school students, testing policies for marijuana increased from 2007 to 2009, when they were a medical marijuana state, it increased by 0.6%. From there to 2012, it rose 150%. That's before they became legal. Teen usage in the last 30 days, teen usage was pure, this is what they report their own usage, within the last 30 days, the last one done before this report, teen, reported teen usage in Colorado, 30-day usage between 12 and 17, increased 50% in Colorado in one month. We have seen a 47% increase in teen use in Colorado's just since they went legal since January the 1st. Get a hold of the Rocky Mountain High Medical Report, every, I may have talked about imperative arrest, I may have talked about the crime associated with suspensions, everything that I've talked about is in this report. Yeah, and here's what I'm gonna challenge you to do here. You hear a lot of information, you get a lot of information from the proponents of marijuana as medicine, and you believe, we as Americans have this inclination, if something shows up on the internet, it's gotta be true, because it's on the internet. Well, I got news for you, just because it's on the internet doesn't make it true. I will challenge you, everything I'm telling you today, go look it up. Another thing, there is not one relevant medical association, and I have a list up here if you'd like to look at it, that advocates the use of crude marijuana as medicine. Not the AMA, American Pediatric Association, American Psychiatric Association, American Lock On, not one advocates the use of smoked marijuana as medicine. But you look at, what you have to frame this discussion around, this discussion, not only in this country, but in this Commonwealth, is around our children, because that's who's gonna be adversely impacted by this legislation. And how do I know that? Because that's what we're seeing in all 23 of the medical marijuana states, where teen usage rates far exceed the national average in those in non-medical marijuana states. So how, as you said, how does that affect these kids? Well, the study that was just released this past summer, New Zealand and Yale University did longitudinal study, following, a 20-year longitudinal study following 12-year-olds all the way up to 32, that were regular marijuana smokers. What we do know is the adolescent brain continues to develop well into 20s, 25, 26. There's some debate, you can pick what particular year the brain cease is developed, but we know somewhere in the mid-20s, the adolescent brain, you know, is fully developed. What this study showed is that those regular marijuana smokers, kids, suffered an eight-point reduction in IQ, which is not recoverable even if they stop smoking. Eight points in IQ, if you're a genius, eight points isn't a lot, but if you follow that average range, which most of us do, an eight-point number recovery reduction is significant. Teen usage rates are alarming in the medical marijuana states. And you think about the intent, and again, it astounds me that this is the only drug in America where a legislator can determine the medical efficacy and safety of a drug. It's also the only drug in several of these states where voters were allowed through ballot referendum to vote on a drug. I know of no other drug that we go to the ballot, liquor store, I've never seen a ballot initiative on liquor stores. Well, we're gonna get to alcohol. Alcohol, when you do this discussion is a, we'll get to that, is preparing apples and oranges, and I'll touch on that in a minute, later in the race, but we are looking at sanctioning a drug, and letting non-medical professionals circumvent our FDA process to determine the medical efficacy and safety of a particular drug. Or even worse, we're going to the ballot, where we in Kentucky are in this voter turnout anyway, we can't even get out and vote for presidential election, and some of you politicians in here probably would like to see a greater voter turnout, maybe you wouldn't, but it's hard to imagine that we as a country decided we want to allow politicians and/or voters to determine what is medicine. It astounds, it astounds logic. And you talk, and you look, and who's using marijuana in the medical marijuana states? Who's actually using, what's the largest 5%, what's the largest age, what age group populates the largest group of compassionate card-hold users in the 23 medical marijuana states? Anybody want to? 18 to 34-year-old is the largest age group. The average, the composite, average user of medical marijuana is a 32-year-old white male, with a history of alcohol and substance abuse issues, that's the composite. Across the 23 medical marijuana states, either through legislative intent or ballot initiative, you're talking about a particular statute that's designed to help terminally or chronically ill individuals. Does anybody want to guess what percent in those 23 medical marijuana states fit the legislative intent or the ballot referendum intent of that particular piece of legislation, legislative referendum? Know what that percentage is? That's exactly right, 3% of the people actually fit. Now, don't get me wrong, I don't think there's anybody in here, as a cop for 36 years, if you're terminally ill, you're not, if you want to smoke dope, I don't, I couldn't care less. I mean, if that's your prerogative as an individual, as an adult, but we cannot, as a society, infer that that rights should be blanketly given to all our citizens under the guise of medicine, it makes no sense whatsoever. No cop is gonna go out and risk, you know, my dad died, a multiple death, cancer, I watched him suffer and die, and if my dad would have told me, you know what, I think smoking dope would help me feel better, I'd have gone bodying out myself, and me being a cop, I would have done that. But, I'm here to tell you, that's not who's using marijuana, and that's what the stat shows. Who's using marijuana, the largest demographics is the 18 to 34-year-old. Who, and you know what their primary reason for the recommendation is? Stress or pain. Stress or pain. I don't know about you, and I used to tell everybody, I can remember back when I was 18, and in that 80 group, I didn't have a lot of stress or pain, and at one time, I had one of these meetings, and said, "Well, I was in Vietnam when I was in 80 years, and I had a lot of stress." I can understand that, I had to take that back, and I always preface that, unless you're in a war situation, I don't know if any 18-year-olds are under a lot of stress or pain, I don't get it, but that's who's using it. That's what the statute is showing us across the country. That should concern you, that we have a drug under the guise of medicine that is being used by individuals who the statute never intended for that to use, because in this country, doctors can't prescribe, it's not medicine. They can't prescribe it, they can only recommend it. And at least for the other thing, whatever, how many of you take a prescription medication every day? I do. What's it say on your box? Tells exactly what you're taking, takes exactly, tells you exactly how much you're taking, and it tells you exactly when you should take it, and how you should take it. It also tells you what the possible side effects are of that. This is the only drug now where you as the patient can decide how you want to medicate yourself. You don't even know what you're taking, because you don't even know the therapeutic level of THC, you don't know what's in the product that you're getting, and the only way you can determine that is if you actually subjected to a laboratory testing to determine the THC level there. So you as a patient decide when you want to take it, how much you want to take, but you don't even know what you're getting, and you don't even know how it was produced, because you don't know what was utilized in the production of that. You don't know what pesticide, you don't know what herbicide, you don't know what was used in that production. Unlike the medication that's prescribed to you by a doctor, that is given to you by a pharmacist, and you have it regulated. I know every day when I take my meds, I know that I'm getting 10 milligram dose, every time I take it, I know what I'm getting. And I have confidence that it's certainly that that is exactly what I was prescribed, and it is doing exactly what it is supposed to do. So where are we at today? You know, some people say that this is inevitable, that there's a ground smell, sweet support for legalization for medical marijuana, and it's all about, we should, we can't control it, so let's legalize it, let's regulate it, let's tax it, and that'll take care of it. A lot of you might believe that, we can tax it, we can regulate it, and we can take care of it that way, and that'll eliminate the black market. Well, I go to our two, the two most relevant models we have in this country, and that's the alcohol and tobacco model. And you say, "Well, from a taxation model..." All right, we're gonna get all, well, first of all, Colorado is not beating their expectations in taxation. You know why? They're going to the black market. They're going to the black market. So, let's talk about the two legal drugs, alcohol and tobacco. Anybody want to guess about how much revenue we generate as, from alcohol, state, local, federal taxes, what we get a year? About $14.5 billion. Tobacco, how much do you think we get? Between 20 and 25 billion dollars. That sounds really good, don't it? Politicians will love it. Oh yeah, look at all this money we can spend. Here is what they don't want to talk to you about, what's it gonna cost us as a society? What is, what are we gonna have to pay as a result of this? And I think I can think of no better model than looking at alcohol and tobacco as a classic example of what it costs us. And I use this illustration a lot, with alcohol, it's costing about $275 billion a year, tobacco, about $250 a year. How many of you here are business people? Many of you have banking business? Banking business? You know, I look at it from this perspective, if you, if you have an idea, I've just got this product here that's gonna cure everything that ails man, greatest thing in the world here, I'm going to the bank, I need some money to invest in this, I'm going to my banker, and I'm saying, "I've got this product right here, that's gonna cure all." First thing they're gonna ask you, "Well, what are you gonna make on it? What's your profit margin?" "I'm gonna make $1." "Oh, that's great, $1, what's it gonna cost you to produce it?" "Hopefully, it'll probably make about $0.3 cents, $0.7 cents." "That's gonna cost me $14.50, or it's gonna cost me $20." Well, I tell you what, the bank, who's the banker? The banker's gonna throw you out fast, or you're gonna be a black type before your paperwork gets there. It makes no sense as a society to think that this particular product is gonna do any better than the two legal drugs we have in this country from a taxation issue. It astounds logic. It's not what we're seeing in Colorado, taxation revenue, that was, everybody lauded how much they were gonna get, it's probably woefully short of their expectations. And I, but I think alcohol, tobacco are the models you need to look at as a country, and look at what, as a cop, and all the cops are here, "You know, the drug has caused me more heartache than any other drug, and all of them combined is alcohol. It's caused me more grief as a police officer." I see someone back here in the back, looks like emergency responder back there, that's the, the one drug that has destroyed more families than all the rest of the drugs put together. Guess what? You know what we have in Kentucky? We have substance abuse problems. We have a huge problem, drug dependency problem in our Commonwealth. If you think we don't, then you're either living on Mars, or you got your head stuck in the sand. We have a huge, ask these people that deal with this every day, that we don't have a drug dependency problem in this Commonwealth. We have an issue, it doesn't matter where you are, we have an issue with opioid addiction, this started with pharmaceuticals, this morphing into heroin. I may even talk about the alcohol problem you have in this Commonwealth. Look where we ran, as far as health indicators, look where Kentucky ranks as far as health indicators, with the two legal drugs, alcohol and tobacco. Look at the other illicit substances that Kentucky has, as a drug dependency problem. And we want to bring in another substance in this Commonwealth under the guise of medicine, and say, "This is gonna take care of the Commonwealth from a taxation standpoint, that we're gonna provide this for our citizens, all we're going to do is further exacerbate our drug dependency problem in this Commonwealth." And if you don't talk to these folks, you're intervention, talk to these folks in treatment. And I, you know, as a police officer, and I don't know how much time I got left, and somebody, somebody starts saying, "Here, I'm back," if you can zoom you down, I'll sit down and up. You look at, as a cop, 36 years, I had the opportunity to interview hundreds of drug dependent individuals over the course of my duties, as a result of investigations... As a result of investigations, worked in our college for a lot of years, I have yet to have one town meeting, but their first experimentation with illicit drugs is anything other than marijuana. But more importantly, if you don't believe this dumb cop, go to Congressman Rogers, he has, and I have two conventions, two treatment centers in eastern Kentucky. Go talk to the folks that do the intake interviews. Everybody that goes through those treatment centers has to subject themselves to an intake interview, every person. Ninety-five percent, ninety-six percent, one hundred percent of the people that have gone through those two treatment centers, their first experimentation with illicit drugs, marijuana. Marijuana's a gateway drug. You, you can sit here, oh no, oh no, well, you're, you're this dumb cop that's spent thirty-six years talking to people that have substance dependency problems, that told me, I started out as a teenager with marijuana, and I evolved to cocaine, I evolved to methamphetamine. But more importantly, go to the folks that are seeking treatment, and see what they're telling you. As teenagers, they started with marijuana. Marijuana is the most dangerous drug in this country. I hope, you just talked about heroin. Here's why it's the most dangerous drug in this country. Because it's the most widely misunderstood of all the drugs. And secondly, it's still the most widely used of all drugs. Like, all the other illicit drugs, combine them together, still doesn't equal the use of rates of marijuana in this country. And then when you talk about kids, and you look at the detrimental, look what the science, look what the research is saying, and how marijuana impacts our children, that ought to be enough to scare them. I get up every day, I look, I got three beautiful grandkids, I raised two of them. They're married. I look at my three grandkids, and that's what gives me, I don't have to do this. I've retired at one job, I get up every day to go. I look, I've spent twenty years in Appalachian, eastern Kentucky, and I look at, we're on our second generation of Kentuckians we've lost to substance abuse problems. And I look at my grandkids and think, we can do better as a society. We can do better, by all means. Let's take a look at this drug, let's take a look at the cannabinoids within it, let's extrapolate every cannabinoid that is contained in not only marijuana, but any other substance that's out there, let's put it through the FDA process, and let's make it into a drug that can be rectified, that can be prescribed by a pharmacist, administered, I mean, prescribed by a doctor, administered by a pharmacist, so that you know that it has been medically proven effective, and it's been proven safe. We have a process. We need to fix that process, we need to expedite that process, but where? We can determine. You know, it's, it's kind of like, you know where aspirin comes from? The part of a willow tree. Extract the compound out of the willow bark that produces the aspirin. You know, here you have the one out here growing willow trees, so you can get bark off of that, and crush it up, roll it and smoke it, and get rid of your headache. It makes no sense. We do the same thing with a lot of, where's morphine come from? Opiam. Opiam. Do we smoke it? Do we have, do you get a doctor prescribing you morphine, just the smoke gets, this opium to get rid of it? No. We put it through the process, the FDA trial, we did, there's, there's a lot of this, you know what, the same, the same plant that produces the morphine also produces heroin, same product. So it's easy to circumvent something good, and make it something bad. And I'm sitting here to tell you, as, as a cop, yeah, for a lot, for a lot of my years early on, I, I didn't think there was anything better value than marijuana at all. But I had to look at the research, I had to read the research, and I had to realize, you know what, there are cannabinoids within marijuana, and they do have medicinal value. But I have yet to find one relevant medical society or association that advocates smoking in its true form as medicine. Let's do, as a country, what we've always done, let's fix what's broken, let's make our system work to the betterment, and let's utilize the cannabinoids that are contained within this drug for the good. But, for a sit here, anybody to sit here and say, smoking dope, but there's a way to deliver medicine, it's a housing, it will never be medicine in its true form. It will never be. I challenge you on this topic to get yourself informed. Get informed, and, and, and it takes, it takes effort. You have to read a lot of stuff, and I say, that's what I do for a living. I read scientific journals, and sometimes you have to take toothpicks and prop your eyes on it. But, you're getting to the relevant information you need. You can't make an informed decision if you're uninformed. And, just as the folks that are advocating marijuana as medicine, as they put out stuff just because they say it, don't make it true. No more than what I'm telling you. Look at what I'm telling you, check the research. Anything I tell you, I can give you where it came from. I'm not making this stuff up. Do your homework, get informed, and get engaged, so that you can be educated as to this issue. The worst thing we can do as citizens is not to do anything. And when you don't do anything, then people that don't have our best interest in our, can do about anything. So, I'm telling you, this is an issue that's not going to go away. This issue is going to continue, build steam, build speed. Some people think it's, it's a foregone conclusion. I refuse to believe that we're headed down the path to where this country is going to have all some marijuana as medicine across the board, or outlandly. Because really, the, the, the goal isn't marijuana as medicine, the goal is legalization. And if anybody tells you otherwise, they're not being honest with you. The endgame of this entire money is legalization of marijuana. That's what it's all about. And it's all about money. It's all about money. Marijuana, by conservative estimates, is a $30 billion a year industry. I'd say it's probably closer to $20 to $40 billion a year. That's what's driving this beast. They don't care about your health, they care about making money. That's what it's all about, it's about money. And huge sums of money, and folks will do about whatever it takes. Somebody mentioned pharmaceuticals, classic example of, of an industry, of an industry that online is, is rented. It's the same thing, there's no difference. And under the guise of, of medicine, it's always, it's about money. That's what this is about, money. So, you know, I challenge you to get engaged, get informed, do your homework, and it's coming. This issue is not going to go away, and if you're not engaged, you're not informed, then before you know it, you know, it will be like these other states, and I'm telling you. Einstein said, the definition of insanity is, does the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. I think we have a great barometer of what's happening within these states, and all you got to do is take a look objectively at what's happening in the medical marijuana states, and for us to think that we're going to do any better is ludicrous. Because I think we'll do no, we will do no better, and in our history, substance dependence problem will probably go beyond worse than the other states. Yeah, that's about the, I know we got to be out here, that's, they're having a format for questions. I think we're moving into a, a different, I'll be here throughout this thing, I think we have some questions later on, so.
At this time, we are going to allow our legislative nominees to have a moment to speak. Does anyone want to volunteer, you first? Mr. Clark? You have five minutes.
Oh, that's a lot, that's many. Thank you very much, I would appreciate your presentation, I appreciate your concern. You know, why didn't John give us this point? According to the word it says, for substances, he'd give us all seed-bearing plants. Marijuana is medicine, it's simply a forbidden medicine. There was, there was two scientists from John Hoffman's University that were given a grant from the federal government, probably under NIDA, to study marijuana and see if it was a medicine. They usually studied negative reports, that's what they wanted to come out, it was a negative report. They came out and they actually wrote a book, Marijuana, The Forbidden Medicine, and talked about why, why it was, what was potent, potent medicine. Now, there are studies on smoked marijuana, I want to look this one up there. There are, there are studies on smoked marijuana and vaporized marijuana, and edible marijuana, from the University of California at San Diego, I do believe it was, was in 2012. And you can find the findings of that study. And they found that almost in every situation where we use opiates, which are very hard to get off of those stuff, and addiction, for pain, for neurology, that smoking and vaporizing marijuana was good in medicine. It met all the criteria that the pharmaceuticals meet, it meets that threshold. You know, when they test the drug, they give you a placebo, and that a placebo has almost a thirty percent set effect on someone. Just the concept of you going to get better or release from pain brings you release in pain. Most of the drugs that they put across the counter, pharmaceutical companies, who are, who are killing everybody's livers, kidneys, and other vital organs, they kill, you know, fifty percent of liver problems in the United States right now, they're going to write the Talendol, and nobody's going to have the Talendol. So Talendol's a carrier for many of the opiates that people are putting in the system of pharmaceuticals. This study from the University of California, San Diego, was under the watchful eye of the DEA, NIDA, watched every step, every, they used the most eminent doctors in the United States, and it was peer-reviewed throughout the United States. Now, the NIDA will not allow the study though, they stifle the study so bad. And it does need to be opened up, it does need to be opened for full research, the scientists can look at this. We didn't even know there was an cannabinoid receptor system in the body until the 1980s, when some Israeli doctors figured out, wow, marijuana was medicine, it had an antidote before that. And Israel wanted to read a study of what goes on with this marijuana, read what they're doing in the old folks home, and taking people off their opiates, it's quite a miracle. A lot of the medical community in Israel absolutely still reject all of it, and say, oh no, it's all, it's all garbage and stuff, and a lot of them don't care, a lot of them are using it quietly, actually, to your own benefit. But, but, I, I have these same concerns that you do, Ed, but it hasn't, you want to keep drugs out of kids' hands, and we absolutely want to do that. We have done a dismal, failure job at doing that my entire life. The only way to really, and I've never talked about legalization of marijuana, I have only spoken publicly ever about medicinal marijuana, because I've strongly believed, and I've looked a long time, and I've put all of our literature together, and we'll pull it all together, and we'll look at all of it scientifically and broad-based. I am so, that marijuana is good medicine for so many modalities, the doctors at the university, a little translational research center, they're not old enough to stand before us, but the head guy tells us, we tell lots of our patients to get marijuana. The nurses tell me, oh, we get marijuana for our parents, and our, and our, and nephews, and in-laws who are ever sick, we get that, well, look at it as a factual medicine. I'm almost going to have one minute. Anyhow, it's, it's really incredible, I loved your, your story about alcohol, tobacco, Kentucky was making about twenty-five to thirty billion dollars on tobacco tax at one time, just a few years ago, was when we raised that tax on tobacco twice, and we were actually spending about one billion dollars for the social cost of it, making about twenty-five to thirty billion dollars. Forty-six thousand people killed in alcohol, anyway, in the United States. Four-hundred-and-sixty thousand people killed anyway in the United States with tobacco. Zero marijuana deaths. Zero marijuana deaths, never been one recorded.
Mr. Russell Webber, would you like to speak?
Good evening. It was a very interesting presentation today, and I'm a current member of the General Assembly. This issue actually came before a committee that I serve on, the House Health and Welfare Committee. In the 2014 session, we had House Bill 350, which was the medical cannabis or marijuana bill sponsored by Representatives Marzian, Birch, and Owens, all out of Jefferson County. And I voted against that at the time, I did not think that this is the road that we needed to go down. And as our speaker here said, I think it, it is true, the end game for this debate is legalization. Because every time this issue was discussed, and we had a number of discussions where a vote was not reported, it would always turn to recreational use of marijuana. And at one point, we had a speaker from California who told us, we need to be prepared, because recreational use of marijuana is coming to Kentucky. And so, I come to you today as someone who's had this issue come before, come before me in my official capacity, and I have opposed it, and I will continue to oppose it. I think it's a, it's a bad move for Kentuckans, I don't think it's the road that we need to go down. And if I'm given the privilege and the opportunity to return to the General Assembly, I will continue to oppose any efforts to legalize medical cannabis for marijuana, in return of this. That's my position, it's pretty clear, all we have to do is walk through the line, and if you guys have any questions about that.
My name is Scott Wilden, I'm challenging Representative Russell, if I have his call. I, I sit on local economic development, and regardless of how you feel about this issue, there's some practical things that I, I think that need explanations from all sides. The first one is, is we have jobs, we have people that need to take and fill jobs. Anybody care to guess what the number one reason is we can't fill those jobs? We can't get people to pass a drug screen. How in the world can we as a Commonwealth say, hey, Kentucky's a good place to bring your company, to grow economic development, and we're going to take a portion of our population and say, it's time for you to do this drug recreationally? Second issue that I see, I spent all day Wednesday representing abused and neglected kids. I represent children that parents can't be bothered to feed them, get them to school, that abuse them, that expose them to drugs. I will tell you that every bit of eighty, ninety percent of cases involve drugs. And similar to the gateway conversation, I don't see a person that tests positive for heroin that's not testing positive for marijuana. I don't see a person test positive for methamphetamine that isn't testing positive for marijuana. I'm so glad that you're talking about scientific facts, figures, that you're actually, you're not preaching morality, you're saying, there's some real concerns here. The one concern, the one thing that I think the state fails desperately that has a lot to do with marijuana, and I especially see this with a lot of my veterans, they'll complain about PTSD, and this might be a load of bunk, but it's what they tell me, and I've heard it more than once, and I tend to believe it, is that a lot of people are trained to milk marijuana to self-medicate. Good, bad, or indifferent, that's the reality that I deal with. And if there's anything that I've learned, as I've examined drug policy, and especially marijuana, is that the Commonwealth of Kentucky fails pretty miserably in providing mental health services, especially to our most indigent and needy Kentuckians. So, the one thing that I hope does come from the discussion about marijuana, is that we at least start talking about extracting cannabinoids for medicine, that we start talking about the failures of our mental health system, and figure out ways to solve those problems. So instead of just saying no, we do up with some real solutions to the problems that are at the door. Thank you all for being here, and as a person that does a lot in this community, and sees a lot of people every day, I want to thank all of you all for showing up to be involved in something in your community. I'm glad we have this many folks here tonight, maybe next time, we'll triple it. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to let Mr. Schmollian have a time to discuss what our senators have said, and what our local politicians and nominees have said. So, you have the floor.
Well, you know, I, I respect Senator Clark and his position, you know, he and I probably could, until the cows come home, and I'm never going to change his mind, he's never going to change my mind. It is what it is with him, and, you know, I respect that. And, but I also...
to these of the country who are already on the road down a path of no return. We deserve, our veterans deserve better than marijuana, a bag of marijuana. And, you know, Senator Clark, he referenced some research. I read that research, and I don't know what peer review that it was subject to. I'll read it again to make sure that, I didn't misread it, Senator, but the relevant research in this country does not advocate crude marijuana as medicine. All the research, AMA, all, that have done all the volume of research. Do we need to do more research into the cannabinoids? By all means, but let's do it through the process, the FDA process. Again, the gentleman touched upon it. We want people to come to the Commonwealth. We want businesses to come to the Commonwealth. We need, people need jobs in this state. You know, they need jobs. But if you're not coming as a business owner, you're not coming to the Commonwealth when you can't fill your workforce because your, that people fail in. Do you know across the country, go to the, 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 Commerce, I've, it escaped me. The number one drug for, for pre-employment admission failures is, you know, the number one drug in America, pre-employment admission failure? Marijuana. Marijuana, the most widely abused drug in America. Most widely, most widely abused drug in America. That's what we need to remember. And this discussion is about our kids. The future of our Commonwealth is our children. It is our children. It's my grandkids, it's your children, it's your grandchildren. And what in the world kind of message are we sending to our children? That it's okay to use a product that has not gone through the rigorous testing. That's the wrong message. Not good for our children. It's a bad message. It's not good for the Commonwealth. We can do better as a Commonwealth in providing for the health and welfare of our citizens than giving a marijuana under the guise of...
Okay, at this time, we are only answering questions that have been submitted in paper form. This is from Gloria Taft. In your opinion, is there a difference in the delivery method, for example, oiled, smoking, or ingestion for health benefits? And I think you've answered that, but you...
That's already answered there. You know, when you look at what GW Pharmaceuticals doing with Sativex and Hepidilax, it's mucosal spray, which is an asthmatic. And if anybody here has asthma, you take your inhaler. And it's seen almost immediate effects with, you know, three to five minutes of separation before you get symptomatic relief with Sativex. You look at, there is no other drug or smoking, burning a product, inhaling smoke, his delivery provides for that particular drug. It does, and it sells. And, you know, you want to talk about edibles? You want to talk about what's going on with butane extraction in edibles, and dabbing, and wax? You look at THC concentrations? I don't believe you want to go there with the levels of THC. Talk about the college kid vacationing in Colorado. They took a bite of a marijuana THC-laced cookie, and within twenty minutes, took a header off the seven-four Holiday Inn at Denver. Yeah, you look at, you look at the edibles. Look at how they're packaged, and look at how they're marketed, they're marketed, and look at who the target audience is. Gummy bears. Who eats gummy bears? Kids probably eat gummy bears. Who eats gummy bears? Any adults in here eat gummy bears? Yeah. Pondy, my favorite ice cream bar, Pondy. Look at the marketing, they're marketing these edibles towards kids. All you gotta do is Google marijuana edibles and look at the packaging. Hot Tarts. Hot Tarts? Hot Tarts. Who, who's your audience? It's kids. Now, that's what you gotta understand about this thing. You talk about edibles, you know, they're marketing to our children. When you look at the packaging, the marketing direction to our kids, it goes back again. If that's all we got to offer the kids in the Commonwealth, then we're sunk as a Commonwealth. We're a match-up.
Next question does not have a name, however, I'm going to read it. You referenced Einstein and repeating things over by being insanity. With that as a definition, it is not. Insanity is to continue fighting to be eradicated when it has not worked in over seventy years.
Right. That's right. And that, first of all, if you're not brave enough to put your name to it, then, yeah, I don't have a lot of respect for that anyway. I'm here, you know, my name is, you know, if you don't want to stick your name to something, then you really don't feel strongly, you're not convicted enough to, to believe that. So, that's not even worth discussing.
This is from Louis Herbert. If Casper was passed as top prescription drug use, why do we continue to demonize a safe alternative?
Yeah, I'm critical prescription drugs and anything else in this country, I mean, this state, a few years ago. And yet, the alternative was demonized and maybe that was, that's my name, I put it on there.
Well, you, well, when you're talking, when you're talking about opiates, you have to realize that the vast majority of the hydrocannabinol and oxycodone products were not coming from Kentucky doctors. They were coming from the pill mills in Florida and in Georgia. For our people, because we, folks like the Senator back there and the other representative, when we enacted this legislation that, that put Casper into effect, that put controls on, on scheduled drugs, particularly those opiates, where physicians couldn't just, you couldn't doctor shop. The doctors knew when you were, when you were running around. And, and, so where did our folks go? Well, all you had to do is go to the lakes and then get on, on air train and watch the pill mill going to Florida. It's a shame that the Appalachian Haida had to send investigators to put, we, Kentuckians, Kentucky police officers, went to Florida and started closing pill mills because we were losing more Kentuckians to opioid addiction every month than we were automobile crashes. Again, goes right back to the problem we have with substance abuse in there. I was gonna talk about alcohol.
The legal doctors prescription. Where do you trust these doctors?
No, you can't trust those doctors. You can't, that's, they're in prison right now. That's how much you can trust them. Those doctors that do that need to be arrested down there.
This is a question and answer session. I am asking respectfully, I am asking for us to start to just maintain order here. All right, next question. Why does it appear that the only people now opposed to legalizing pot is law enforcement and drug companies? Are they afraid of losing jobs and profits?
You know what? Nothing would suit me better than to work my way out of a job. You know what? We live in, in a society where cops are always what we need. And, and what we really need to be framing this discussion on is how do we get our people off of drugs? How do we get our people off of drugs? How do we get Kentuckians to where they don't feel like they have to medicate themselves to survive? Obviously, a lot of you haven't been around the Commonwealth and taken a look at the issues that we have in eastern Kentucky, south central Kentucky, northern Kentucky, with substance dependency problem. That's what we ought to be focusing around, is how do we get to a point where we have an environment in the Commonwealth where our kids don't choose drugs? They don't see, they see a future other than drug use. They see a jobs. They see an education system to work. Talk about the lottery. Where's all this money going to the lottery that was promised to fill all these schools that we haven't seen a nickel from? Where's that gone to? Where's the lottery money gone to to provide the schools, to educate our people so we can have a, an educated workforce, so folks want to come in here and bring a business into this state? We ought to be focusing about, we don't spend enough money. Senator wants to do something great, put more money in prevention and treatment in the... I'd absolutely love to think, you know what? Things are so wrecked in the Commonwealth that we need half the cops we got. But you know what the reality is? What it is. And it's not gonna be any different until we get a citizenry that gets fed up with drug dependency in this Commonwealth, and we get some elected officials that have some gumption about it, to properly fund prevention and treatment in this, in this Commonwealth. And when we do that, we're only helping each other.
The next question, I think this is more a comment, and I'm just gonna read it. Charles Wine says, "As a twelve-year veteran treated by the VA and of fourteen diagnosed diseases, thirty-seven different pharmaceutical medicines was used on me. I researched internet and cannabis helped most of them. Now for three years, I'm treated by the VA in mobile. Some doctors agree it works, others don't. My doctor has recently recommended me to moving to medical cannabis state. She stated opiate overdose suicide dropped approximately fifty percent in medical cannabis states. I'm for medical use but against the legalization." Was the comment. The last question is Jamie Wontalo. You state Kentucky was number two in production of marijuana. With that said, has the billions of dollars spent to eradicate done its job? Has it worked?
Well, first of all, most of the money spent to eradicate marijuana through the DECEP program isn't your tax dollar. It's asset forfeiture money runs the DECEP program. They use adult grower money to cut the downspins. So, that's, that's a fallacy that the other side puts out, the billions of dollars. You look at drug law enforcement, a large percentage, you know, we do use some tax dollars, but it's a small percentage. Particularly with eradication, DECEP funding, domestic cannabis eradication suppression program through the DEA is what funds the eradication program in Kentucky. It's all asset forfeiture money, not one dollar of your tax dollar is used to do that. So I don't, I don't buy the argument. We still, in law enforcement, have to enforce the laws. There's no way around that. We are sworn, we take it over, to protect, defend the Constitution, and enforce the laws of both federal and state. We enforce the laws. We will continue to enforce the laws. And that is what it is. Whether you like it or not, it is still a violation of the control substance act, schedule one drug. We have a duty as police officers to do that, and we will do that. We will continue to do that. You should suspect, expect nothing less than your police officer for them to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and do their due diligence to the best of their ability to enforce all the laws of the Commonwealth. So, that's how I answered that. I don't think we wasted a nickel. I don't think we put enough money into where we need to put it into. Again, that's prevention and treatment at the federal level and the state level. That's where we need more resources, and that's where we're woefully inadequate.
Okay, we have finished the question and answer session. I just want to leave with a few things to say. I'd like to share with you just some information, just to give you a little background. I'm a former math teacher. I'm a former assistant principal. I have worked with kids in youth, all of my adult life, and I've seen substance abuse rampant. And it is a problem here in Book County as well as everywhere else. And I've seen it firsthand, and I'm sure you guys have too. I'm not saying I know anything different from you guys. But as I was reading, he, he referenced the, the Colorado impact. Let me show you this. This is the Colorado impact. This is, it's a hundred and fifty-page document where they show statistics on ingestion, hospitalization, and it goes far beyond the huge, the youth effects that it has. But I, I want to close by just sharing a few things that, that I think pop out here that I, I'd like for you guys to walk out here with. In 2012, ten point four seven percent of youth ages twelve to seventeen will consider current users compared to seven point five five percent nationally. This is in Colorado. Drug-related suspension and expulsions have increased from thirty-two percent from school year skin in 2009 all the way to 2012 and '13. Thirty-two percent of suspensions and expulsions for our kids, and they were marijuana-related. They were drug-related. The THC potency, like he has referenced, has written from risen from an average of three point nine six percent in 1995 to an average of twelve point three three percent in 2013. The potency is a lot more for our kids. Youth who use cannabis daily before turning seventeen are over sixty percent less likely to graduate high school compared to those who never used the drug. Seven times more likely to commit suicide. They have an eighteen percent greater chance on becoming dependent on cannabis. Research has shown that persistent marijuana use causes an acute decline in our youth. We are trying to raise our kids to be successful young adults, and this is startling to me. I have two daughters at home. I want them to be as innocent and fully capable as they possibly can be. So my stance as a parent is to protect them as they grow into adults. So I'm asking you guys to fight this war with me. Those of you that are interested in coming to partners in prevention and being an active participant, I welcome you to come and be a part of our group. Thank you guys very much for coming. I appreciate the respectfulness on both sides of the coin. And I hope that you're at least able to walk away with some information that you can take. But the most important part here is the legislation. Think about that, guys, as you start to vote and you make some decisions for our state. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.